I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
You go to council, Theodore, Chief Close, Ryan, Mr. and Mrs. Officer. Next time. All right, approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Do we have any changes?
We're only going to discuss the personnel and safety manual tonight. We will not be making a motion.
Can I plug something?
Yes.
I want to move my motion about the state attorney to the next meeting.
We can still discuss.
I don't want to discuss. I want to move it to the next.
Okay, cool. I did have some information that I was going to share. So, is everybody okay with moving it?
We can move it out, but we can discuss it too if you have the information.
Okay, I do want to share some information. All right. That's true. Okay. So, we're only going to discuss the attorney and we're only going to discuss the personnel manual.
Is the wage increase just discussion?
Oh, does it say?
I'm asking that be taken on this motion. You think I can change this?
Wage increase? It says discussion. Two percent wage increase. We're not voting on that. You can't. It's a discussion.
I haven't seen a plan from anybody. So, we have to meet on the 29th so we can make a motion on the 29th and discuss it and maybe share the idea that we can all...
I wonder if that's the next meeting again here.
Say that again?
After the first of the year, first meeting after the first year.
The attorney one or the?
The attorney one.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the changes are we're moving the motion for the attorney to the first meeting in January. We are moving the motion for the pay increase.
Discussion.
Discussion. Well, we can still discuss it tonight, but we're going to... We'll have a motion and a vote on the 29th for that special meeting. And did I miss something?
Personnel.
Yeah, we're... We will only do discussion on the personnel manual and then we will make a motion and a vote on the 29th. So, only those few changes to the agenda. So, I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the agenda as it has been changed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. General meeting on December 1st, meeting notes.
Motion to approve. Sorry.
All in favor, December 1st?
Aye.
Opposed? December 10th? We have one correction we need to add. We have one correction for the December 10th. All members present, the 92 Georgia, we want to refer.
Maybe the second one?
Second, anybody?
Wait, second meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that was first one?
Okay, good meeting.
I made the motion to approve the December 10th.
Okay, your second. Thank you, Greg. And Georgia has requested an update in her name and members present. Any other discussion?
The motion, Theodore, I seconded by myself to not letting employees be free unless all see the point of saying benefit. It was four to four, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you break the tie?
No, I did not.
Why?
Because we were looking into if it was a taxable benefit or not for some.
I think you still have to break the tie.
Are you done?
You don't.
She doesn't have to.
Is it because... Excuse me, I'm answering. Is it because there's money involved?
Yes, possibly.
There. According to Rod Ford today, he's all verified, it gives, what's he calling, a form of compensation to spend video. So, you couldn't go in and fail, correct? It gives a form of compensation, so that was correct. You did not go in and fail.
I got it failed. Listen to me.
Hi, thank you. She added to that. Theodore? Theodore?
Theodore.
Could you bring that up?
Yes. Fine. They don't need my...
We share.
They can hear me.
So, yeah, this is from Municipal League and she checked on it for me for IRS compensation and different forms. As long as it didn't incur substantial additional cost to the city, then those benefits could be offered. It also went into giving examples of the golf course and the recreation area.
I'm just telling you what led us to give all these benefits and you can't say who's right or the other. The city attorney also agreed that it's a benefit.
And also...
Can I finish before you get into that? I'm not quite finished. Then you can have your side. If it is a benefit, you didn't vote on it, which was correct, then the benefit given to the police department and the housing board is not... Hasn't been voted on, has been approved. So, who is paying for that?
Well, remember we had the discussion on whether it was required for a job or not?
Well, there's still that. That's... We can fix that in the future.
Here's where I'm at on Caroline. There's still a lot of discussion that needs to be taken before we do what is requested by the council on this item and I am not prepared to move forward with that right now.
But we moved for when you gave them the benefit. The benefit shouldn't have been given until all of this was figured out. So, who is paying for this benefit? It's not been approved by the council.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, they need... You know, that's a problem.
We're just... We're just trying to get through, you know, this agenda. You do agree to what is written in the agenda? I'm sorry, not the agenda, the meeting notes. That's what I had.
I'm pointing out for the record that we have a problem and I want to know what's going to be done.
What you're pointing out is that a motion was on the table and it failed.
No, I'm not pointing.
End of discussion.
It's my discussion. I pointed out that she did not vote on that because if we're spending money and that's spending money, then how can she give?
I understand what you're saying and I will continue to work on that. Right now, I just need a vote on the December 10th, meeting notes.
I would like to admit that I want to next rate meeting here. I want an explanation of how those benefits are being paid for.
December 10th, meeting notes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And so did Wes. Those in between?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Total for the public is $103,002.09.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims, $127,736.41.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. I'd like to know, well, I've got damage up by Farrell's house that cost fifty, fourteen hundred dollars. I'm trying to find...
Where did you say?
It was like four appearances.
To whose house?
I guess it was up by Farrell's house. I don't know whose house it was. It was cement.
Page eight.
They put a cement wall. Well, I think Greg's referring to the plant electric.
There was an old electrical hook-up and it was in the street where the water department was digging up and they found this electric home hook-up that was to Joyce Farrell's house. So, they were digging. They are paying for what they broke.
Didn't they do a line call?
It wasn't known, it was there.
That's a secondary line. It's up to the owners to locate them. How in life will it locate secondary?
About halfway down.
Well, I guess I'm confused if it's up to homeowner to basically let somebody know, why are we paying for it?
Tracy.
Or why didn't we turn that into our insurance, I guess?
No, I didn't ask Tracy that. I asked him what it was about and that's what he told me. Do you want me to turn it into the insurance? I don't.
Well, is now why we... Is now why we have insurance, I guess?
I didn't even know what it was until Craig was saying what the bills made out to Joyce Farrell. I looked at it and it is. I asked Tracy what it was about. He didn't inform me until I asked him what it was. I'll send it to you.
I got a question on page eight. So, I see we got our bill here from that spin doctor. So, did we... Are we going to surplus the old spin doctor or is it even worth surplusing or what are we going to do with it?
Hasn't been talked about yet, Wes. Be nice to surplus it.
Can we recoup some of our money?
Is the spin doctor that's for the sewers, looks for both sewer or one of them?
Both used it.
Which bill is it?
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
So, it kind of looks like it comes out of the water department.
I don't know, they have water and sewer.
Over 30 percent of the time.
So, you... What Tracy quoted it to was what? So, that's quoted right.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. On page one, what is the whole housing segment?
That was the treatment that was set up for the city employees to go to in August for what... I don't know what time it was.
Productive working environment.
And any city employee that wanted to go to it was able to go to that thing.
What is on page five? Black Hill Special Services wasn't that problem.
Black Hill Special Services cleaned like library.
Twelve hundred was...
It was a couple months.
Northern Hill flying on page eight, Northern Flying LLC.
That's that company that's doing Fourth Street and up on 19th, that's Schedule A.
You get a motion for the current plan? You have that with discussion? All in favor of paying our current plan?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carried. Communications from the public, Neil Miller.
Yes.
Depot updates?
Well, there's some questions that came up. Steven Dean Montgomery, their time has been consumed. And a couple of questions came up about electricity use. There's 12 windows, there's 12 electrical lights. They were put on for 24/7 because we didn't put no timers on them yet, but we turned them off and we're waiting for the council what they would prefer. There was a couple of questions and one was calendar of events. There is no events that we know of. It was offered in the paper as Call Genie and it's set up with Christmas stuff. And then the other question was the cost of use. There is no cost. It was the donation to the city or whatever. So, that's where we're at. The lights are off the depot right now and just looking.
You mean the Christmas lights are off?
Yes.
Doesn't that know why those were turned off? Those should be left on.
Well, there was a question to Genie about a high electric bill at the depot.
The questions were around the schedule of events. I called her. We were looking for a schedule of events and I need to be charged.
And a price structure. My reason for that is it's hard to make the Mueller Center pay for itself if we're going to compete against someone using the depot for free. I mean, it's... To me, I couldn't understand how could we let people use the depot for free when we're charging people to use the Mueller Center? I mean, to me, it looked like we were in direct competition with ourselves and we were never going to win. So, I was asking if there was a rate structure set up to rent that. I had no problem renting it, no rate structure and there's no calendar of events, just Christmas decorations inside and the windows.
Did you have anybody call at all?
I couldn't. I've been out of town and I couldn't answer that.
So, you're saying there's no calendar of events? That means that nobody is going to be using the depot.
I believe I... Mrs. Montgomery put it in the paper as to call her and she worked it out or whatever. But their time is very consumed, so that's...
Well, I guess my thinking is if we're going to continue this down there, then we need to basically have Chris work with whoever is doing this and put a rate structure together to kind of make things go aside.
He did and everything is still on also. This will be...
I believe so.
Yeah. These are the problems before when we have broken pipes because we have failed heating system. I also like that too, that last year when a group of us, women, five of us and others involved cleaned up the depot, we didn't have any heat, we didn't have running water. We had the generosity of the community helping us and we did this over a period of months. And I think we all remember how cold it was last winter, January and February and March and so on. And I'd like to exclude myself from this, but I'd like to propose that maybe the people who volunteered get a chance to maybe have a function, you know, maybe a group, a gathering, you know, maybe a one-time deal as kind of a thank you to them. And as I said, I want to exclude myself from this, being that I am on council. But there were a lot of people who donated time or services, people brought us food and...
I'm concerned if it's... If the water is shut off and if people don't go in and check on it occasionally, if we have water still and heat and all that, then maybe we can check on some, but I guess I don't know.
Yeah, that was the problem with the ceiling. We had some disturbances. You know, I think we need to stay on top of our buildings and have no more deferred maintenance. We've had that in the past and we need to keep things up. We have a beautiful town.
The sewer department, Parks Department takes care of the grounds and stuff, why can't they go ahead and check the building also?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll work on that process. I know Bailey goes in and checks on it every now and then, but maybe that isn't the best solution. But basically, I mean, I don't know what you want to do with that proposal. I know a lot of people did some work there. But Neil, to your comment, you know, when people use the depot, to be fair, you know, that's what's implied there, you know, there would have to be some kind of fee to rent it out. Just in general, we definitely need to work on a rate structure for that because we haven't rented it out before. But that is something I can talk to somebody about today. Was that you?
That's right.
Okay. I have too many kids here.
Right.
But, you know, that's kind of where we're at with this and if Genie, if somebody does want to use the depot before we announce a rate structure, I don't know if we're talking for that, but we don't currently have one.
Would the councils wish to get the lights back on if I can get it on a timer?
I'd like to see the Christmas lights on.
Absolutely. We're not spiritual. It's not like we're... The whole area up there changes when you light them.
Yes, it is.
It's a magical light.
Thank you. I also have an outline from Friends of Evans Plunge and it's more or less courtesy tells you more or less, we're working on our park plan, Friends of Evans Plunge, and it gives outline what we're trying to do and at the end more or less states how we were presented to council, to the Parks and Rec Board. So, it's going to go through the source. I'll explain.
Are you aware of when we have our parks meetings?
I've been to one, month and a half ago or so, but...
I thought the park, there's a plunge was part of the plan that we had. Isn't there something?
This is outside.
I know, but isn't that part of your parks plan?
No.
Traditionally, I will never start it, but they did talk about some.
I thought there was something in your book they talked about.
Well, there were several things we could have done, but we only opted to pay for certain aspects of that parks plan.
But there were some things on there.
We haven't gone to the parks or asked and it was nothing, so friends, we thought it'd be good to somehow spruce out the outside.
The mural on the south side is great.
Well, that's... That would be the cultural development, but it worked very good together, getting outside shelters and new painting tables and signage in one area.
Neil, I'd like to offer to be a representative for your office.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Did you want me to present at this time or do you have me on some other topic?
Yes, Diane. But you have... We can barely hear you, so if you could...
I wanted to know if you wanted me to present at this point in time?
Yes. We usually have a podium. I know you're new, but a podium is helpful with...
Yeah, I don't know where that...
We won't make you stand in the corner. If that could be put up in the front, it's helpful.
Would you like me to do that right now?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you.
Gotcha.
And I'm going to also need more table space here.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll get some of these. Are there two different things?
Yes, two. No, just one. One presentation key and... I'm Diane Gross, president of the Cultural Development Organization. We're a small lawn profit, recognized by the state. We were formed in 2006, basically to promote cultural, architectural and history and we are the ones that are doing the murals. Our organization grew out of a desire to work with local artists and share the history of the area on the canvas of buildings in our town. The murals you see in town are gifts to the city, where history becomes public art and the financing for these murals though, happens through fundraisers like the Evening Wine and Roses held annually on February 7th. I've got a couple of... February 7th is our next one and I've got a couple. I'll leave some invitations for you. Our board of directors include myself as president, Pat Dittsbaum, vice president, Gail Pinkerton is our secretary, Sherri Winslow, treasurer, Dustin Gosman, media and promotions, Amanda Campbell and Susan Stolarczak, newest members Stacy Roberson and Amanda Brangle. Members at large are Adam Heath, Don Johnson and Darlene Limes. We're a small board with a determined focus. The process is we have, again, one fundraiser. We've had other little ones along the way. It is conducted with a different theme each year. This year is an evening in Paris and generous donors fund the murals each year. Businesses offer their buildings as campuses and the partnership begins. An event leads to donations, leads to a canvas for the artists and history comes alive. This year, February 7th, 2015, is at the Club of Woolies and again, I have a... That's just... I just included a couple of different ones as far as that. Each mural has a name and documents part of the history. Our fifth mural, A Perfect World, will be painted on the west side, the other side of the barnyard vet. We have already commissioned Evans Glamour and most of the funds for this mural have been set aside already. We're looking for the next canvas for a mural and the wall of the Evans Plunge seems like a wonderful opportunity to showcase our history. How do we do this? The next steps would be once we approach secure, once the building is secured, usually the building needs to be prepared and obviously it's been painted already. We conduct a call for artists to paint the mural. The concept for the mural is created with the CDO, the building owner, which is the city, the artist and must meet the approval of all parties before painting begins on the building. The cost for the mural is approximately four, forty-five hundred to six thousand dollars depending on size and what needs to be done. We pay for the paint and the tools for the artist as well as commission the artist for the work. So, it's all done through our organization. Work could begin as early as late spring, sometimes, as with any fundraiser, you know. We've changed the dates of it around. It was originally in February and because of economic things, we changed it to May and then to April and we're going back to February this time. So, anyway, sometimes the full amount necessary doesn't come about, so we then go into another aspect, asking for sponsors a lot of times and you will see, when you read each one of them, like Ace, there is... There are two supporters and sponsors. That means they gave over a thousand dollars in the support of that particular mural to be painted. We are beginning to market our Evening Wine and Roses and we would love to be able to say that the monies will go to the painting. that, um, the monies will go to the painting of a mural on the Evans Plunge. And we're just proposing that. I think it's, um, um, it would be a wonderful partnership and thank you for your consideration.
Diane, you need to know the answer prior to your, um, February 7th meeting?
Well, if, if, um, if, if this is something that you would like, I mean, essentially, we're going to raise the money and, and we provide the building. And so if, um, if there is, you know, um, if there's a way of being able to say yes, then we, we go through that process.
And the council would view artists' renditions...
Oh, yes, oh, yes. We go through, yes. And that is not a, it's not a, it's not a simple little process. It goes through the beginning stages. We, we ask them to go ahead and, and, and give us a little rendition. When the first one comes back, we say, hmm, maybe not, and they redo it. So like many a times, the one on, um, on Ace, um, uh, third one, he said, "That's it." Or there was massive changes between all three of them. So there's, there's a whole process. And again, the building owner, the CDO, and the artist.
So we'll have, um, the name of the plunge still on there or not, do you think? Because it's, you know, kind of known by the...
Well, that was my question. Is this mural going to take up the entire south wall of the Evans Plunge?
The, the, the wall that's now blank, that used to have the, the mural with the kids out there, yeah, in the Evans Plunge.
The entire wall?
Um, that's my understanding. It's just that, that, yeah, that one part that faces the parking lot. I think it's, I think we...
Seventy-two inches?
Seventy-two feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, pretty.
But it would say, Diane, it would say Evans Plunge.
Oh, sure, yeah, exactly.
That was painted. It would say the city's...
Yeah, we need to identify the building.
Yes, definitely, definitely, yep. And, um, obviously, it is, there's, the, it's, it's always been a dream, I don't know, I guess maybe of mine, but of having the old, it's historic. We are, we're, we're putting, it's, it's history becoming public art. So we have so much, um, so many wonderful pictures, um, even the old, uh, the way that it looked could actually be put on, painted in there with, with some new stuff in there. So we'll, you know, once we get an artist, then, and we can begin to look at this, uh, to move forward, then we can put the pieces together and have our artists kind of give us an idea of rendition.
Okay. So are we okay with them moving forward, with the meeting to discuss it?
Yeah, I, I think we...
I think it'd be great to get something back on that side. The plunge, it looks pretty...
Boring.
It looks like an institutional building.
Yeah, right, yes.
Nice. Thank you, Diane.
Can I add something to this, please? If people in the city, the more they donate, uh, smaller items for the silent auction, large items for the auction, all that money goes to that mural on the plunge, which saves the city beaucoup money.
Yeah.
And also, every one of you that goes and spends thirty dollars on a ticket, part of that money goes to the mural. Part has to go to Woolies, obviously, for the dinner. You get a dinner with them. There's a silent auction and a regular auction, and the more people that come, the more people bid, the more the money goes up. I know I bid on things sometimes I really don't want, and I end up getting them, but anyhow, you know, to, to boost up the, the money. That's the idea. And this year, I'm really excited about it because it goes to us, the plunge.
So what we were talking about here is in the first regular meeting in January, we put it on the agenda for a motion.
Sounds great.
Sure. Okay, and then we'll, then we'll public knowledge.
That sounds wonderful.
Okay.
And, um, our information, and obviously, if you can get ahold of me at the bookstore, um, uh, there's email information, our mailing address and everything. Thank you.
Very good, Diane. Any other communications from the public?
Can I just, I just want to bring something to, to light here. As far as the employees, the Alpham Theodore and Ginger, none of the other employees there get any benefits as far as medical, dental, they don't get overtime. That was their little perk. That, that was their little benefit. They get minimum wage, and they're not getting all of the benefits that all of the other in-city employees are getting. That was it.
Any other communications? Thank you. Any other communications from the public? Okay, personnel. Some information about staff at the plunge. I don't know what we're supposed to do with that, but we don't typically...
Just information.
Just FYI on Stacy Walker.
I guess I have a question on that one. It just says part-time employee. I mean, if you're going to tell us how many hours a week, a month, uh, it's pretty vague.
How's she going to prove her hours? Wes, I'm, I'm open to discussing that with you, but we don't schedule anybody, any other part-time employee. That's the department handle does that. So it's based on me.
In part, yeah.
Well, Misty and I have discussed it fully because it's not 2015, but it's definitely something we have to look at. And there is budget for it, so we could, we could do an average per week.
Where's the budget?
Parks.
Parks being our supervisor, which is under more...
Well, except for it was really for, with, with Wes and Tallgrass and, uh, the grant writing to implement that, um, Parks Plan.
It is a new position, and it has to be voted on by the council.
Then let's...
And, and...
And October.
It was like, we wrote it on in a...
Right, you, this, this council has a different, or some in the council, um, wants to do things differently, and I find it want to vote on it.
I'm not doing these differently, I'm following the law.
Um, I'm not going to discuss that with you right now. If you want to vote on it, let's vote on it.
It's not on there.
I thought we already voted on it.
I was, it's already on another...
Well, I agree.
There was no actual motion, there was no second, there wasn't a call for it.
It's never been voted on.
It was on under personnel and everybody just...
And we don't do that with every part-time employee.
She is a new position. I've talked to several people about this thing because it's, nobody's trying to stop you from having your grant right. We're just trying to do it right.
Well, that's really subjective because I hear all company, you know, depending on who you talk to, we're done or we're not done, so...
Well, it just, it's a new, it needs adoption script. And if it's in the budget, ten dollars an hour, well, how much are we going to pay her? The amount we're going to pay her has to be there.
We talked about five to ten hours a week when I talked to her.
Does she get a percentage of the grant?
Didn't we talk during, during budget time?
Yes, we did, and we approved the budget.
Of ten to twenty-five thousand dollars for the budget writer?
It wasn't even that high, it was like...
The grant writer?
No, it's not in the budget. Is it in there?
Yes.
Professional fees at the...
Yes.
Professional fees is...
And the, and the budget was approved.
Okay, how much is over there? Is, will there be any fees from Tallgrass? Because that also comes down there.
I don't know. I don't know if there will be another bill, when they make their final presentation. I don't know how much that'll be. I don't know.
First season out, we're going to pay her, so we have it in, where it's coming out.
We, we discussed her at budget time. We increased the budget to cover for her. We approved the budget. We have, we've had her, I think this is the third time in our agenda, so I don't know what you want to feel that this is done. So you need to tell me what you want to do.
She's going to approve a grant writer for so many hours, and then we have it, and that's what she'll do. And that she has a job script, because she needs some oversight. You are someone, is there a grant she wanted to write or...
Well, it's going to be based on our final plan with Tallgrass.
Okay.
Okay.
But when she's actually working on the grants, is she going to just write grants? I've seen people saying there should be something, so is, if she's successful, some grants writers get a percentage.
No.
She's not going to do that, I understand that, but we need something, so we can see we're getting something for our money. If she's successful.
She will be reporting her hours and what she's doing.
And the success and the success grant.
Of course, we'll have to...
Should be in her job description, and we're going to supervise her. And if we have all that, then...
Well, Nolan Schroeder will be supervising her starting Wednesday.
But we need that in the job description.
And that's, that I can, that I can do, a job description.
It's a new position. It just needs to be put on the agenda your next 29th meeting to hire her, and it can be done, but it has to be done right and for so many hours.
Well, um, we'll work on the job description.
You have to have the hours that you have to... How can you budget something?
On a part-time employee, anything under thirty-two hours is considered part-time.
I said, I really think forty. I don't know why. Some people say twenty...
Thirty-two, that's what they use, so they don't have to pay insurance, all that other stuff.
Right, that's right.
So as long as she's under thirty-two hours a week, she's considered a part-time employee.
Yeah, then we would budget her for thirty-two hours.
It'll be under ten hours, I mean, it's very low.
I know, but what I'm saying is that's what legally part-time is, is thirty-two hours.
All I'm asking is that we have a number, so we know the amount is coming out of her.
Well, here's the thing. I'm saying if we hire those part-time health in the summer, we have to tell them how many hours they can work in a week, too.
No, we don't, we don't schedule part-time.
Yes, it is. It's a third-time employee.
This is a new position, new position.
It's not a full-time position.
It's still a new position.
We'll do a job description, is what all agree to right now. Okay, um...
Are we putting it on the agenda for January 5th, or for the hiring?
No.
Now.
What do we do with this?
I will do a job description, and then we'll decide.
How can you get an opinion about it?
I know you will.
Is her merit paid still that we are covering 29th, that we should hear her?
Yes, we can't approve people and then keep reapproving them.
I'm sure we do.
I know, we did, we did. We need to look back and... We did.
It was in the information item, it was never voted on by a motion. Since it's on the agenda, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with it. I don't think we can, it's just, I'm here for information.
It's hinted upon her job description.
And I've taken the action item to write a job description, and after we do that, we'll talk about what we do further if anything. Ordinance 1152, supplemental appropriation for city administrator, and it's actually also includes city finance officer. Well, the reason why we have to do this is for... So, just so people understand why. Because we split out Harley's job, and the two of them make slightly more than he did as one person, we need to do an appropriation ordinance 1152.
And this appropriation comes out of kind of where?
It's an unassigned fund balance, it says right on there. So funding is unassigned fund balance.
On the order.
Which is...
I will make a motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? One, two.
So this doesn't affect our budget anyway.
Nope.
We could next year. Correct?
Correct.
This is just for this year?
We'll, we'll do budgets again for next year.
This is, this is for 2015.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's calendar year 2015. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carried. Old business, table item motions, unchange order number one for Sloman Contractors, contract increasing by nine thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy cents. And I think Tracy provided additional information.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to bring you an email I got today from constituent on this stuff. And I'm going to vote to approve this, otherwise lawyers will lead it up and will pay that much plus lawyer fees. Proposed change order raises a couple of questions, which I'd like to address with the council meeting tonight. Appears this change order was initiated after the work was completed. Is this correct, general or the legal process? The increase is approximately sixteen percent above the original estimate. Understanding this contract, anticipated flexibility quote. In the square footage completed, question, doesn't this sound like a more than acceptable variance from the amount estimated? Another question, how was the original square footage estimated? And the third question is, was the completed square footage build out, built out, verified by city employees? I can answer a couple of these. The original square footage was estimated at ten foot for the alley length, times the length of the alleys. And when the milling company came through, they had a larger machine and actually did a larger width than what was in the original bit package. So that's where the cost overrun come in. And, yes, the completed square footage was verified by city employees. In the future, I feel we need to do our bit packages better to get a more accurate reading of the square footage to complete, so we don't have these problems.
And what type machinery they're using. We, we understood that it was just a, a ten-foot wide machine.
We didn't understand anything. If, if the engineer would have done his job, he would have called and found out, correct? My problem with this is we've got an employee that just okays these change orders without even talking to him, like, public works. I, I got a problem with that, I really do.
Are you saying that they, they didn't do the work properly?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Are you saying that they didn't do an extra two-foot width?
I'm saying...
And length?
The engineer should have done his job. That's what I'm saying.
So we actually got what we are paying?
Oh, yeah.
I guess, I think he did do his job, but he underestimated the original square footage.
Well, he didn't think this could go that wide, and he told him to go ahead and go that wide. He said he did.
Which is a better product in the end.
But ultimately, he should, I guess, if there's a question, he should, he should have talked to somebody. With that kind of money, he shouldn't went to you guys, Public Works.
I think we need to come up with a signed change order that gets approved by the public works.
Like whatever, Paul's...
We're going to have change orders as it's happening, if possible.
Yes, I think that when we bid things such as this grinding, we bid it as a square footage, which should put a cap on it. Well, I kind of thought we did, that's why...
Several different things we've...
When you bid square footage, well, you have to make sure you justify it, you know, like, if you're going to spend fifty thousand dollars, that's all you're going to spend.
And was, there was a variance included in that bid, like that?
Yes. Not for changing square foot.
Well, I agree. We need to do a better job on our bid process, and I think a second set of eyes on the bid might not be better. Um, and depending on the contract made, determine who's the second set of eyes, who's done experience on the council. I don't know what else we can do here with this.
No, we need to pay it. Otherwise, they'll take a score, and we'll pay more than one of your fees, and we will lose in the end.
That is totally true, so...
Was this in our, our bills, our claims?
That's a change order.
Okay, so it's, it wasn't approved in the current claims, so we need to...
No, we took it off.
Okay.
We took it off.
Did I get a second?
Yes, most likely.
All in favor to pay?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, another check. Okay, uh, new business, Horford County, accepted in low bid. New business, Horford County accepted a low bid of Nelson's oil of gas for eight thousand gallons of fifty-fifty blend number one and two. Two seventy-four per gallon. Any discussion on that? Do we need a motion on this? Or just... Okay. Need a motion to hire an audit firm?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some information to give a discussion. We consulted with Tracy Hampson, the senior audit manager, Kaitlyn Thorstensen. She provided us with two names of people that do these types of audits for cities. West River, we only have two. I have proposals from both of those. I didn't make copies for everyone because I just got them today. If you buy copies, you're just like to stop in to see them. Out of the two, we have Donovan Banker and Associates. Their proposal came in at twenty-two thousand dollars plus out-of-pocket costs for travel or postage. If we do 2013 and 14 with them, they'll give us a ten percent discount, so a twenty-two hundred dollar discount. The second proposal came from Casey Peterson and Associates. This proposal doesn't have any discounts if we do more than one year. And the proposal is for thirty-three thousand to audit the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2013. And there's additional fees if they have to audit major federal award programs. And then they estimate about six hundred dollars in travel costs. So we can look at those. We do need, both of these places are saying they couldn't even start until March. So the sooner we can make a commitment to them, the sooner we get them going. And they will work concurrently with Tracy as she finishes out. I have an update from Tracy too, if you want me to share that now or later. January through March, 2013 bank reconciliations have been completed. Determined that there's some issues with the twelve thirty-one twelve cutoff in check states. Also determined that payroll taxes will properly paid but not properly charged to cash totaling a difference of three hundred eighty-nine thousand. So that's been found. They'll continue to finish the remaining bank reconciliations for 2013 and 14. Once the bank reconciliations are finished, they'll begin to adjust year-end accrual balances to include accounts receivable, accounts payable, et cetera. And during this process, they will prepare the work papers needed for our audits. They've received the city's capital asset information and will get that entered into software to properly track the capital assets and related depreciation. Once all accounts are adjusted, they'll prepare the annual financial statements for 2013. And they anticipate the process will be done by the end of January, 2015. So she'll be done with thirteen by fifteen. Hopefully, we can get in March, the audit for thirteen started. And then they'll be working on fourteen by the time the audit firm gets down to thirteen. Hopefully, they get together and get it done by the end of January.
Make a motion if we accept the whole bid?
I'll say it.
Are you guys okay with that?
That's the one we like.
It's okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Let's go straighten it out. We've been asked to support statement in your package from the municipal league on infrastructure projects. A penny for infrastructure, okay, for the program. We're not really agreeing to a dollar amount or anything like that. But the state would like to know if we support this bill.
Is the bill an additional penny of municipal sales tax? That's what we need supporting? Additional tax?
Yeah, they've been bringing it up in just about every municipal meeting we've been to. The state's roads and bridges are in pretty bad shape. And they feel that they need additional funding to get those up to standard. And therefore, they want money, no money.
This is the state asking us?
Yeah, Yvonne Taylor's with the state municipal in your package, this email.
This is basically an accolade in his knowledge of politics about the state.
But it's horrible.
Something they could do about our...
But it affects our area of the whole state?
No, it's...
The law.
It's statewide. Every city in the state is receiving this.
But I mean, if we're doing our sales, we can come back to us.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, not necessarily. We definitely, you know, this is, I think, partly why, and this is only speculation, why down to, you know, three eighty-five through town is so delayed. Kind of ran out of funds.
Although they did buy the building on the corner by the stoplight district.
They did.
Yes.
The way I understand this proposal is that it gives the city authority to request from their constituents a municipal tax to be used within the city for infrastructure within the city. That's the way I understand this proposal. And as such, I...
I don't know how locals define though. If it's the city.
Municipal.
Page two, line two of the bill in your package should tell you how the money is being charged here.
But it's for municipal use. It's not for the state's roads and bridges.
Well, I can support the consideration of adopting it. But I'm sure that what they're saying here is with the approval of the voters, so it's going to be the entire state.
Right. It would be with the entire city. The city would propose it to their constituents within the city.
On the very back page, it says, "No election is required to authorize the issuance of municipal non-add value tax revenue laws." The law on issue is only requirement... Okay, just on number five on that item there, the way it looks to me, there's no vote. To me, I just, I'm not in favor of any new taxes whatsoever, so you know what my vote will be.
At least I want to hear you though. I believe I have a second. Any other discussion? Did I not get it? Sorry, you did it. I don't know what to say.
Jordan, did you second it?
I did, but I... I only excuse to support the bill, I guess, but... I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Greg West, Y. DM. DM.
Five to three. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Housing for the boxing club.
Jordan, do you want to...
Yeah, I can talk to that.
You've given up?
Yeah. Pastor Jacobson came and talked to us about finding a place. We talked about using the Miller Center and that didn't quite work out. And he didn't find out that the water spill station, the old one, has that. The present one, we just have the building like decided it has a police department right now. But the one side is empty because of the heater in it. The plumbing is there if they need to have a restroom for use, but it's all been drained. And he has a lot of work that needs to be done, but they are willing to do that themselves. Bring it up to a usable area for him. They'll only use the one side that has the heater for now. And see how it works. But they'd like to get started if we're letting use that one half.
I have to make comment with regard to this as president of the council and also a member of the American Legion. And I'm on the board over there. I think we should talk to the American Legion before we move forward on providing anything to the boxing club.
He does. Someone in the public asked me about this. They wanted to know how many members are in the boxing club.
I don't really know how many of the... That's information I don't know.
That's something I need to know. We need to know if we're going to be able to use the building. Are we going to tear those buildings down and sell those blocks?
Now, hopefully. I don't think that there's enough in that building. Granted, there is a heater in there, but I think we cannibalized it so bad that I think it'd cost not effectively to try and heat that.
I went and looked at it today and, yeah, it's a ceiling heater. The propane...
The propane tank there.
Can I ask? The propane tank is gone. And the electrical, and there's electrical box. Basically, all their assets were just the space. They would make sure that if you get the tank, it's all there as well. That's all I know. If you'd like to have a little bit more information, I think that's fine.
We also talked about using upstairs in the plunge. What happened there? Well, I couldn't use it.
There's exercise equipment in there right now. It's being used for something else.
It's been maintenance run too.
Upstairs?
No, downstairs. I've got a big... Maybe it's been used too.
Is that apartment in there?
They use it so that the office, maybe meetings up there, yeah.
I...
You'd have to get a box there.
No, I don't think that's...
I think you have to have a higher...
Most of the most house.
Yeah, you'd have so much different noise.
I don't know why they couldn't use the newer center, but I guess I'm not even know.
Well, the concern was is they would have to tear it down and rebuild it frequently because of other activities and... And they didn't want to do that.
Who's going to repair it?
Well, they have a boxing club and they provide the liability insurance and everything for it. Pastor Jacobson is the one that actually is trying to support to begin her. I mean, they've had it here, but I don't know exactly what happened down there at the Legion.
Well, I'll talk to the American Legion people and maybe decide.
I think that's a good idea.
All right. So let's just leave it at that for this meeting. Wooden flag signs in Centennial Park cost a location. Is there an update on that?
I came here last week and the sign that was, because it's how we made it across from the American Legion. When I came to and I asked the council if they would vote on this, we would like that sign to remain up. Because it was done very well. It was a nice sign. It's at Centennial Park and it talks about that. The issue is, it really needs a permanent place. In other words, two poles around. And we'd be more glad to put it up for you. So I came to the council and said, number one, if you would like it at Centennial Park. And if so, if you can manage to put your poles up there so we could... It's in maintenance right now, getting brass this...
What do you mean by in maintenance? Is it in our shop? Or somebody else's shop?
We're taking care of it.
Okay.
It's free. We want to give it to you. If you would, if you can manage to put any poles in ground. I know there's a cost in that. You wouldn't know where it's thrown.
I'd look at that thing. I really kind of like the bracing and stuff you've got there now. Try to go right in with the park. But is there, I guess, I just got to Carl and I thought about, is there some way we could just anchor that? Or do you think it actually have to be set in with holes?
What I would see, the problem with what we have is it won't stand up long. Because it could actually physically blow over.
Anchor it if we anchor it.
I would like it a little higher. Okay, if I were to put it up, if you're just a little bit higher than that, so it's looking for, it's breaking in, I...
Understand.
So the city would need to put a couple of poles in the ground and some concrete and then mount that sign through it and things? Is that what you're asking for?
I could even manage to put all of the grounds, the city can. Problem is that I don't know what...
Don came to the parks meeting and kind of talked to us briefly about this. And he wanted to bring it to the full council, I guess. Bring everybody up to speed, I guess, on board.
I guess I'd like to write to where it's at. It's right where you come in, where you come into the park.
I want it to... It's also on the Freedom Trail.
Well, we'll probably have to work with Far to find exactly how it's positioned and where. But I guess the council just needs to decide whether we're going to move forward with installing it permanently or not.
If I would make, yeah. If I would make a motion that we agreed to provide the posts for the riders to put that sign up there just where, was that in the, in Centennial Park? Would that do?
That'll do it. We'll take care of maintenance of the sign, so.
And I would make that motion for a period of time.
We just need to talk with Far and make sure it'll work. We don't want it to be a mowing problem. I mean, we just, all parties need to come together. Mark would probably know where the sprinkler heads are too.
And electrical, I mean, we'll have to do due diligence before we put poles in the ground.
The motion is to provide the supplies to, for the Legion riders to put it up permanently.
Did I get a second?
You did.
I don't remember who it was. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll get that done. I'll do a work order tomorrow and Far will probably need to add some orders with these. He's not here.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, I guess that's you.
Last week, we proposed honoring our heroes, which is a part of the, kind of a part of the American Legion group we brought to the wall. We want to put a monument on the Freedom Trail every year. And what we want to put on the Freedom Trail is a life-size statue of somebody from here. And so the discussion was last week to work with the council to create a location for it. The first one, we thought we want, we thought we're going to put in, we're going to put in Legion, you know, and put it on the Freedom Trail. The first one we're going to put in is Lawrence Russell, who is a Medal of Honor winner, who's buried on the hill and who worked at the Southern Sister or the Sisters.
Last Christmas.
And there's a history behind him, et cetera. We would like to put every year a life-size bronze statue of somebody from Hot Springs that served in the military. So I'm working with the parks to find out the distance for the years. For example, I would like to put Afghanistan over the, over this land. I'd like to put the Civil War starting over here at where the bridge came down. But until we get the plan, I can't put that together.
Okay.
And we haven't asked for any money. I don't know if we will. It costs fifty thousand dollars.
So, did you have any issues with that, Wes?
No, we want to talk to Tracy. Someone has a plan that basically laid out the whole Freedom Trail by war or conflict, whatever. So he wants to coincide with each part of the Freedom Trail, which statue will go there. Someone for Vietnam or World War II or, you know. Just so it all kind of coincides so it's not just really, really scattered all throughout the trail. He wants it to be done in accordance with how it was intended to be done. But we got to get somebody that has one of the original Freedom Trail drawings and proposals. I guess we're going to have to ask Tracy for everything he's got.
I called and I talked to somebody this week. I think Jordan's having cheap work going. He is one of the original people that talked about this and stuff. Joel Allen, you might have something?
We'd just like to move forward with our consult. And additionally, we spoke last week on the back in a temporary basis. We'd like to put a couple of markers down every year. There would be sandstone, marble, that would hand on tape. For example, World War I, so many people died World War I. So many people died from South Dakota in World War I. So many people died in Hot Springs during World War I. And so along the walkway, and it was mentioned, we could make them into a bench or whatever. I'm willing, the work with every concept you have, but I would like to begin to fill the Freedom Trail. I'm willing, the work with every concept you have, but I would like to begin to fill the Freedom Trail with honoring, honorings to our veterans.
That's what it's for, so. Do you, do we want to vote on this to give them permission to move forward?
This group, we need to find out.
Or do you want specifics?
Get a hold of, we need to find out and we can, so we've got to see if I am of what's going.
I wouldn't give out the plan.
We did, we're gonna find out some kind of.
Well, I think you just want the thumbs up.
No, Mr. McKee will give us a million dollars to build our statue.
We can still get an approval to go forward as long as we have a plan.
It's not costing the city any money.
Take it.
It's not costing the city any money.
I'm not asking for any help.
I make a motion to move forward with this and to come up with an organized plan, as Wes has suggested, so it isn't just random.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
We're excited to see the plans.
Yep.
Um, I know Carol Anne wanted to remove motion to have city attorney attend council meetings. I just, um, I, we will remove the motion part, but I did want to, um, share a conversation that I had with our city attorney Carol Bowes about this item. She is not opposed to attending these meetings. And if that's what the council decides, she will attend. What she would prefer is more like daytime meetings where she actually goes over the agenda with the council and shares, you know, her thoughts, laws, rules, uh, with each of the agenda items. And have, you know, a shorter, possibly a shorter meeting and not having her, you know, dragging back and forth at night. But again, she will if that's what we decide. But she really felt that it should be a meeting when, after the agenda is finalized and discussed with the council. And what I was trying to do in the beginning of my term here was have those Friday meetings and talk about the agenda. Um, and, and she's not aware of that, so, you know, you, I'm not, you know, partnering with her on this or anything. She, um, would prefer a meeting, not where we're making motions and voting, but a, a pre-meeting where we can discuss. So you, you can make informed decisions based on law prior to that.
Supposedly the pre-meeting requires a vote? That's what she told me.
If the council wishes for that. She would prefer that as opposed to being here when you're actually doing the voting. Actually give you the opportunity to understand the laws of what's on the agenda. So you can think about it and make it, you know, an informed decision when you need to vote.
Or we could just give her, if someone has a question with the agenda, they could basically ask that she go over it. Instead of having another council meeting before the council meeting, I, I, I just, I'd rather see if someone has a problem with, with an agenda item, they could just have her address it. Because I.
Having, have the meeting, that'd be four hundred dollars plus what we've been paying the attorney.
I'd like to.
Well, it's actually, it actually could be less in the pre-meeting from any of the attorney perspective than having her sit through a two, three-hour meeting.
But you still gotta pay that council for each one of those special meetings, while you can't call special meeting, I guess, for every, every meeting.
I'm, I'm just sharing with you, this is just discussion and that's, you know, what she's proposed. So we've removed the motion part of that from this agenda, which I finalized, but she, I, you know, I didn't want to not share with you the discussion that I had. So, anything else on that or we go to the water station? Dwight?
We're planning to fill stations. I'll make a motion that we proceed. Give us that chance to make the plans on South Chicago Street and bypass. Because we paid for it out of the water fund and this is a, uh, money-making deal for the city.
Then we can turn down our drugs. So, uh, bro, so, uh, bro.
And what plan?
Do we have a second?
Oh, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the plan presented to you?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll move forward.
We are gonna get that done, yay. Motion carried. Discussion on three percent wage increase for contract and all other employees. Tim, is this, do you want to share with the group?
I guess basically what I was thinking is, we passed an overall three percent increase in the budget for wages. However, I'm against a, a three percent per individual person. What I would rather see is if we give each permanent employee fifty-two cents an hour increase. At that rate, we have, I figured it out that we will still, we'll be within our budget limits. We will not exceed the budget by doing it that way. And that's my comments on that. And I believe with the three percent for contracts, I know we've got contract people, you know, most of those are, are pretty minimal. They're, you know, worth less than a hundred dollars. So I guess I don't see why, and we have got those contract.
And they haven't got cost of living raises.
Right, they haven't got cost of living raises for five, six years. So you're basically, you'd rather call it a cost of living raise instead of this three percent based on increase. So this way it's more fair. More fair.
Well, and it's two cents less than what it was last year.
Right. What I did is.
So this is the same as what you proposed last year?
I proposed fifty-four cents last year. I figured it a little bit different.
And you.
The way I figured it this year was, I took three percent of every employee's wages, added it all together, divided it by the number of employees, and came up with the fifty-two cents. That way, I guess as far as I'm concerned, a, a cost of living increase should be the same for everybody. Because if you make twenty dollars an hour, you make ten dollars an hour, gallon of milk still costs the same. And that's the way I look at that. That's why I propose that we do it this year. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to discuss the three percent wage increase?
I'm fully in support of the, the way that Tim figured it out. I agree with it. I made that last year.
So we need that on for the twenty-nine?
Do we make a motion right now?
Do a motion right now? Well, it says to discuss.
Discussion.
So, okay, well, it's just a business.
Okay. Well, if somebody does.
Uh, no, about that. Discussion doesn't say we're motion. Let's submit the motion. Put it on a motion for, well, you.
Twenty-nine. Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, um.
No, it's the law.
We'll do it on twenty-nine.
Why we vote on the wooden flag and say motion there?
Well, I'll check into that. If I'm right with everybody by the twenty-nine.
I do know the truth.
Okay, thank you. We need to decide whether we're going to continue the contract with the meter reader. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Renew the contract for Barnyard Veterinary Services.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Sure.
There's, there's a couple of the vets around. Why don't we all check price? There's one out of Farwood Road.
Not in city limits? And she doesn't want it.
But you know, a new vet is buying that, you know, why do you want that?
They're not in city limits.
Because they had the contract.
They had it before.
And they, they do not want it. They did not want to continue.
It don't really matter. We don't make our employees live in two, and that's why can't we do business as I said.
Um, because the person you're proposing does not want to do the contract and the person we are proposing does want to do the contract. And I'm not aware of another veterinarian.
Have you talked to the new vets?
I want Edmont.
That's the way I was.
Do you want the ACO driving to Edmont two, three times a day? I don't.
I know Sheila didn't want it, but have you talked to the vets that are now working here, considering buying it just to.
That good, it's in city limits and probably.
No, I have not, to answer your question directly.
They might be nervous.
Barnyarders who we've been using, they would like to continue. They're three hundred bucks a month.
Parks town going, use a big, a big question, use.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we have to let other vets make that?
Uh, I don't think it's prudent to have our ACO driving out to Edmont.
Bad Mountain Humane Society has also been taking them in.
I can't hear you.
Bad Mountain Humane Society has also been taking them in.
That's a separate issue. This is a, this, I, I mean, I, thank you. I don't mean to, we're, we're focused on whether we're going to renew the contract with Barnyard or, or Animal Control Services.
Have a motion.
Any in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Contract with, um, Teresa to continue to be playing the police department.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So is it a done deal for the rest of the contract people?
It's coming up.
Is that what? Next meeting?
Are you talking about?
Yeah, golf, well, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, motion for ACO, pro shop manager and golf course superintendent to become employees rather than contractors.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Discussion. Why are we changing things that isn't broke?
Because it is, it is broken because they are not, we, they are, we pay their taxes. And by law, by the IRS definition, they are not contractors, they are employees.
Well, it's not their taxes, then. That's an easy fix that way, too.
Well, if it's not broke, broke, why would we, we've been paying their taxes for years.
I just, I'm, I'm just curious, you know what I mean? They've been contract employees as long as I can remember and then just all of a sudden we're gonna change and pull down employees.
Because the way that we work with them is more of a difference in their job description than actually being a contract employee. We pay their benefits, we pay their workman's comp.
These guys pass.
We pay their taxes and as defined by the IRS, they are not a contract employee. And you did get the email on that from our attorney in the last meeting.
Did they ask if it changed?
I, I know Jason and I have had quite a few discussions. We're changing our ACO. Per our attorney and per the IRS, the way we manage them, they are not contract employees. So we should not renew them as contract employees.
I have a copy of the letter from Carol. And in here, as we just done, my recommendation is that all employees be governed by the same set of rules in the employee handbook. I told Carol about this one, she's under their pressure and heavy that we have something for a seasonal employee or something. If you look at the handbook, there's nothing there. So if you want to do this, we've got to add a description of a seasonal full-time employee. Since this is what Carol thinks.
We have job descriptions for these people.
I'm talking about this book we've been working on in Barnyard. Well, there's not a job description we've been looking for. We added a salary.
We added a sentence.
So that there's not one now, but there.
There will be on the twenty-ninth.
The old one does not, you're right, but we added a door.
That's why we need to approve the man.
And, and that, are they going to get sick leave and annually? They didn't before.
That's right.
Her job description is what it's been told. Their job description allows for less time, different than the approval, so they didn't get it.
No, they did not. That should be in their job description.
It's in their job.
I think what we were gonna have in there was salary employee and then, um, it was per their job description.
Okay. Yep, all right. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Correct. Again, we are moving the, uh, motion to approve the Personnel and Safety Manual to the twenty-ninth. You received the updated safety manual for your late-night reading compared to the twenty-ninth?
Right.
Interesting stuff.
There is a copy for you to look at. There are two changes that we, which ones that you got, I didn't think that was, but read through it. And, um, Scott said that they didn't have the insurance adjuster company. We went through it very thoroughly and the employees have gone through it and they like it. So, um, we are up to speed, I think, pretty much on the safety manual, so we'll redo it again.
Yeah, all the department heads have, uh, reviewed it and commented and rewritten it. And insurance is given in their book. So, um, that should be a go on the twenty-ninth. Please look at it. Discussion on the plunge logo?
I kind of thought that Hot Springs was trying to get a brand going with all kind of one logo, one theme. So I guess I'm kind of curious about.
We're not allowing it, yes.
Well, I'm just curious where this plays into our water theme, I guess.
I think we can do better than this.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious, you know, if we're trying to get a brand.
It has to be cohesive, something that reflects the whole area. We're about the springs and the beautiful weather. So I think we can come up with something that reflects that.
Well, it's cute, uh, little kids.
It's exactly the same for eighty-five percent of all the swimming pools in United States.
We have special ones, we're not. Is it on here because somebody's working on the logo? Who's doing it?
You and I have, have discussed it and we've also brought it up here before, that, you know, we're looking to change the logo for the plunge. The one that's there is, I know the Broncos fans like the colors.
Yes, they do.
But, uh, it just doesn't really reflect the city branding or, um, the uniqueness of the mineral water. The colors do not match the branded colors. So we are looking to, you know, continue to look at, um, options for a logo for the plunge.
Could we do a contest where people would actually? Yeah, the people that have ideas.
Yeah, they can really bring a free swim in the plunge.
Something, yeah, it'd be great. We have some good ideas that come through.
One of the reasons why I asked about this being the full wall of the plunge. If we're going to replace that top left corner with a logo for Eric's plans, this can be.
Well, we can work, work a logo into the mirror. I mean, we can request whatever we want in the mirror.
Yeah.
Also, I, I think maybe use signage, the sign we have out front for the other plunge.
Which sign?
What we just bought?
We didn't buy that, someone else did.
Exactly, exactly.
Which sign?
What is it? Is it on wheels or something?
That's a five thousand dollar sign thing.
Oh, no.
One of the, the, the breach figured out.
No, we need something special, and I think we can do better than that. Evan's Plunge is special. To me, I, I refer to it as the jam and the crown of tourism in our town.
You're going to have to wait until you get some work done for it, because I'm telling you, signage is expensive.
Well, we have enough, right, we have enough people who are interested in the plunge. But I think if we develop projects, I think there's people who want to help.
What about the artists for the bureau being a part of this? I would think an artist would have a better vibe.
We have to have Theodore look into setting up a contest with some kind of, to collect. You favor that, Theodore? Work out something that we can have a contest, the local artists can, as long as we incorporate can our brand. Right. Can kind of work into it. We want to start out with your idea of incorporating a brand, have a man on it.
Is the, is the city brand like the signs that we have coming into the city? Is that a city brand?
I was all assuming that's what we were living for.
The colors, the style of font, the swirls, yes, I would say that that's part of our brand.
We can make this sound like a candy spring. Because even we can put Evan's Plunge or. I'd rather know that.
So Theodore's here, so he's.
If you have the two hundred by two hundred.
He's here, so I'm, you know, I mean, we can look at other options and contests. But I guess the, the concept of this item on the agenda is, you know, to let you know that it's still a work in progress, that we want to rebrand the plunge, relogo it.
Let's keep working.
Give it an orange and blue.
Yes.
Well, from an artistic standpoint, with my art education, blue and orange, the eye cannot read them at the same time. So is it fashionable?
Unless they're on a manny.
You better call Denver.
Yeah.
I know, I've seen.
Yeah.
An artist, and my daughter teaching art, I walked in with this one, a whale face.
Aye. Well, again, we dig the ideas just to keep you thinking about it, alright? So committee reports? Unless Theodore, you had something else to say there. I didn't want to. Okay.
You're being awfully quiet, Theodore.
What?
You're being awfully quiet.
Every time you open your mouth, we jump up more. They talk about a mammoth, we keep on jumping off a diving board.
I, I think the concept is, you know, they really want to focus more on the mineral water and that history concept of the plunge logo. Carl, administrative. Moving to committee reports.
On our administrative meeting, if you want to get a copy of the minutes of the December tenth meeting, that's everything that was in there, including the mayor and the city council continued to review the Personnel and Safety manuals and coming up for approval.
Are we going to get personnel guide before we approve it?
Yes, she worked on it today.
Kind of like to see a revised edition before I mask the booth.
Yeah, it was ten till five, and Misty? We definitely can. I mean, whatever. Yeah, I've called meetings without emotions before.
Twenty-four hours in a town of care, but it's all this legal stuff.
The main person I want to know is Brett.
For the caller, turn.
Public meeting on the twenty-ninth at, at three P M. This is what I'm going to be saying in a couple line items here. Anything else, Carl?
That's it.
Uh, Dwight?
We have meeting December ninth. Myself, Tim, Craig, Wes, Tracy, and the mayor are there, and some other people. Public. We are now using the old armory on top of the hill for cold storage for water and sewer equipment. P R B valve, pressure reducing valve, project is underway. So we hopefully have a little help with our high-pressure problems on the water system. And, I'm sorry? And we discussed the alley building project and why, why the council run was. We are waiting for the final billing from Northern Plains for the fourth street project and nineteenth street project. Set a bid date for the screw press, new water and device from sewer plant, since we can no longer have the sludge at the airport. Water bill station was on the agenda. And we talked about hot showers and Evan's Plunge.
Yeah, so we hit them? Not yet. You'll, you'll.
Nothing was decided.
Still being worked on.
But it's, it is good to know that it is something that's being discussed a lot. I made a challenge to every city council member to come down and take a shower in the eighty-two degree water. And I think Georgia's probably the only one.
I'm waiting for.
I've showered in that water many times.
Alright, anybody else?
I haven't.
Three of you have.
I haven't, and I'm not going to be back for another shower.
Well, see, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
I, I repeat, it's being worked on.
Since I worked there for years, I went to that shower all.
We've asked Tracy to do the cost analysis of doing hot water plunge. When we get that, we'll discuss it. It'll be a one-time cost, and then, of course, the ongoing thoughts as well that we'll need to be aware of. Carl, code and ordinances?
Nothing at this time.
Wes, parks?
Well, Don come and talked to us, and we talked about everything we talked about tonight. Had a meeting with Tallgrass again. They kind of went, went over finalizing that plan. I'm assuming they're going to be here in January. I guess, I don't know when they're next. Their new meeting date is to come and tell us their final. I'm assuming it's going to be in January.
What I talked to Tanya about was the first meeting in January. She, I wasn't able to meet with her before this meeting. And she said she's a school, she's the school board president in Custer, and she has a meeting tonight anyway. So it just worked out that we delayed it. And we talked about it being the first meeting in January.
As far as, oh, I mean, they're just kind of, the parks committee kind of went over it, and everybody kind of agreed. We made sure it was all fine-tuned, and that's what she's going to present to us, the final plan.
So you're okay with that? Okay. And we hadn't had a chance to talk either, so. Alright, so we'll, and I knew this was possibly going to be kind of a longer meeting anyway, so it'll be January sixth or something like that. But thanks for all your work with them. I look forward to getting a lot of grants and implementing that plan. Chief Close?
We didn't have a meeting this week. Just a few things I've looked at, though, and talked to people about.
Could you explain why you didn't have a meeting first, so people don't think you just didn't have a meeting?
I was busy.
We, we had a pretty urgent issue that came in right before the meeting time, so it wasn't that, he didn't want to.
I was, I was busy doing the police work. A few things we've looked at is outfitting our vehicles so that you can tell if it's a shared car or if you can tell if it's a police car, so people don't call and ask us why we crashed our cars when we didn't.
That was a good job, wasn't it?
Looking at going to actual shield set of badges, that's stuff within the department. Other issues have been brought up. If you went up university, you can see the crosswalk sign on nineteen, eighteen. And university, that's up now for the kids. A little more visibility.
And that was actually requested in a public safety meeting prior to Mark, or, I'm sorry, prior to Mike being the chief. So he just followed the family up there.
A few other things is there is no crosswalk from eighteenth all the way up. I mean, the rest of the way through university, heading out by a family dollar, there's no crosswalks. A lot of kids cross there. If we can look into how we can get some set up there, that'd be great. Not that they always use the crosswalks. But at least we can say they're there. Another issue that's really come to the forefront in the last couple weeks is the bullying issue. That's been huge lately. A lot of calls from a lot of parents. We're looking at ways that we can, I don't know, if we need to do presentations at school, if we need to take the kids that are being the bullies or the ones being bullied, sit down and talk to them. We've all had an issue in life with somebody. When I was growing up, you got bullied, you got punched, or you punched somebody that just doesn't fly anymore. So we need to resolve it in better ways. So I'm looking to how we can fund something to get going up there, bring people on to talk to the kids. I go up and talk to the kids. I've been going up to school a little bit last week and try to make a bigger impact up there. Go up there, get rid of kids last week, so we can do that more often. That's about all we have, some of the meeting stuff up top, I think.
They had a program of, I don't remember who paid part of it. The city would pay part to have an actual officer, a liaison officer at the school. And I, I still think that would really be beneficial to us, but that's up to you, of course.
I, no, I agree with you, Wes. I actually talked to one of the administrators up there of how it would be financially broke down. In my mind, they have the officer nine months a year. We have, and they would pay for nine months. If they could fund that, we would pay for three months. Gives us an extra officer for three months, a busiest part of the year during the summer. So if we need to sit down and decide how we can make that happen, I would be all about it. Because I was up there for probably about an hour, just around lunchtime. Went and talked to the teachers, went on the playground. I mean, just a teacher seeing a cop there, or a kid seeing a cop there. Eyes get that big, you know, and a lot of those kids I know from the football program. You know, and they like seeing me in uniform. I stop and direct my little boys' class, Miss Lem's class. So I mean, I, I enjoyed being up there.
I just see this great P R deal, and we have nothing else.
And we have an officer that would be more than willing to do it. I mean, he's come to me and said if we get that, that's what he wants. And, I mean, through the, through the football, through being with the, you know, that many kids, I've seen that if we can make an impact when they're knee-high to a grasshopper, they're going to stay out of trouble. They're not going to see us. And a lot of these kids only see me as when I come in and take mommy or daddy out of the house. And that's not how it should be seen.
Is there any way you can do a security guard instead of a law enforcement agent?
I would want a, I would want a law enforcement officer. I don't want a security guard up there.
Is there a reason for that?
Because they're going to be state-certified. It's a lot of liability, and I could let anybody walk.
They have to be a state-certified officer. With the gun, as long as they're carrying a gun.
I'm not going to say. The main reason for a school resource officer is one, for protection. If somebody comes into that school, that's the first line of defense. I'm going to come running. They're, but they're going to be right there. So I, I don't see the reason of why you have them on cloud and gun.
Do you have a chance to look at intersections and alleys and stuff, like I asked you when you started interviewing?
My, my first week was pretty busy.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you plan on doing that in the future?
I will establish that for you.
I've got one more thing, too, the portable speed sign. I got people keep asking me, why do we buy that if we're not going to use it? I said, I don't know. We talked about it two months ago. We were told it would be implemented. Still not implemented, so I guess.
Is this the new one we thought?
We've had it for years.
I've been told it broke down.
It's not broke down.
I don't have tow package on my vehicle, so.
Well, under the point of, I guess, getting together with just the street shop, and I'll give them a list where to move the thing.
I mean, as long as they can get it, get it set up.
It's simple.
It's not hard.
Somebody in the police department has a tow package, could be used to carry it around.
His vehicle does, mine doesn't.
Or what happened to his vehicle? Who's got it?
It is sitting, waiting for somebody else to start grabbing it. It's actually got to get fixed for it, it's on the road.
You want it?
No.
He's got the new one. That worked out well.
Yes, it did.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Georgia?
We haven't had any meeting for the.
Here, I'll meet you off-lane.
Yeah, but we will Tuesday the third. Right now, it's September thirty-first, but that's New Year's Eve, and so we will do Tuesday.
During Friday.
The golf course.
So that's the golf course board. Jason, myself, no one doesn't know it yet, but he'll be there. And you're welcome to attend. It will be at noon at the, but it's not a public meeting. Alright, thank you. Misty in the back row?
I was asked to find out more information about liquor licenses. That's true to ask. The rule is if someone renews their liquor license, it can stick dormant without them using it for two years. After two years, we can force them to do something with it.
But they have to apply for it again?
If they haven't renewed it, it immediately reverts back to the city.
Got a question, though. That's a special license. It was a veteran's license. Different than regular liquor license. Does that come back to the city, or does that go to the state?
This one comes back to the city. It's a club license.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary Hardy did the checking on it. It comes back to the city. We have a place we'd like it to go. Once it comes back, I think, December thirty-first, it reverts back to the city, their installment, so they're not going to be renewing the license. We'd like to have it at the golf course.
So the golf course couldn't buy it from the city? They don't have any money.
I might give them a discount.
Or would it be more lucrative? Well, as I say, it would be more lucrative just to sell it.
We'll have to rebate, but we'll have it back.
Well, automatically go back to the city.
Was that, did Misty catch anything else? You, you will give everybody an updated version of the Personnel Manual prior to the twenty-ninth?
Absolutely. I should have it put up tomorrow.
Grab your red bow.
Unless we have any other changes.
So we'll let you know when that's available, and then hopefully we'll get that finalized. The big difference for the Personnel Manual is we're going to, we're going to put a chart in. Make it very clear on sick leave and vacations.
And that was, we did hand it out, but this is a little bit different.
Some clarification on that.
Didn't you say today that the, the employees were talking to about that? And they agreed to, how the chart is working?
I didn't, I'll report it.
No, we'll move into mayor for you.
Okay.
The chart's going to.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's okay.
They clearly defined vacation. We're, we're going to measure in a weekend years of service instead of pay periods, just so it's clear. And, yeah, I'm, okay. So, so we will have a chart in the, the manual, but then that'll be the key thing that you need to look at for the twenty-ninth, because that is the change, and it's just for clarification purposes. The other thing that will be on the twenty-ninth is the resolution. Grandfathering in those that would be adversely affected by the new rules with sick leave carryover. We'll also include in there that annual leave or vacation leave has to be used by the following year, March thirty-first. We'll also include in there that annual leave or vacation leave has to be used by the following year, March thirty-first. So, that'll be in there as well. So, those are the key things you need to look for.
Are people who have the grant, that did read those people grandfathered in, to fall under that? They're either grandfathered in and they keep their leave, or they're under this, which is it?
According to the attorney, yep, we have, in the resolution, we'll spell out, not necessarily their names, but we'll identify them by employee number, each of the employees that are impacted that have been with us greater than ten years, and we'll specifically spell out what they're banking for. She said not to use the term grandfather, but not having it better than that. And then, everybody will be effective January one, twenty fifteen, except the grandfather people. That will specifically be spelled out, what were grandfathered, so that will be on the, the new manual going forward.
Can I say something? I, I don't know if we'll be able to make that meeting. I talked to someone about, about a perspective on, on a way to handle this, and I... This is what they said, to kind of ease the fear. Is what you would do at this point is to put a bank together, basically. And if, if everyone decided to retire in the very first year, they split whatever's in the bank. But if they stay, and they start, we either buy them out in a couple of years, or if they, if they, I guess, a few years start retiring, whatever, then you buy them out then. But if anyone's concerned about, if they're all just gonna walk away at once, that's, that's, that's how they handle it. They put a bank of money together, and then they split that.
Yeah, that's what the school did years ago, too, when they had that same mission, when people had a certain amount. If you were bought out, you get X amount, but it was divided, most of the people left. That is a possibility, and we did talk about that.
I mean, personally, I just think we need to probably buy these people out in a timely fashion, and then move forward.
Well, we need to budget it, it's very...
And I realize that, I mean, we're gonna have to budget it, because... Basically, the way that Misty's got it set up right now is, she, I was in the office today and she discussed it a little bit, and it's kind of, nobody's, they're setting aside the people that are, have the big amounts, and starting to kind of pull over or grab, but that amount will be set there. They're not gonna lose nothing, but there's also, if I remember right, there's a cash policy in there, too, is there not? So, if they, if the council okays it, and they want to sell that down, we can okay that and do it, am I correct?
Well, the new personnel policy even spells out mayor approval, being able to cash out sick time. But in our resolution that we're putting together, it's just stating what's being banked. So, I, I don't know how that bank thing works, but people could quit, they could be fired, and then they no longer get it. So, this is people that leave in good standing, so I don't know how that would work in that scenario where somebody...
I don't either. Well, my, my thing here is, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna lose.
We don't, we worked hard on it, Wes, to make sure nobody was penalized for any of these changes.
Well, here's, here's my thing. The police department just lost a big chunk of their budget.
That's true.
Because of this.
Yes.
And I don't feel it's fair that, that should have been budgeted for. I don't like the way that deal was handled. I mean, because they, they lost a big chunk of money this year.
We did with the administration when Cheryl Wafer turned.
I did, and I realize that, and I mean, that things should have been planned out a little bit different.
And that's why we've written this, to make sure this isn't gonna get happening.
That's why the attorney, maybe...
And that's what I said at the last meeting, when it comes to budget time, we should look at putting some money aside to budget for that.
We discussed this a few years ago, and it just kind of kept...
Well, Misty, Misty is well aware of the situation and the, the high numbers, and when we talk budget, she will make sure that we're, we're reminded that we need to budget for that.
We need to make sure, I called Ron for today about that. He said you do not budget for this.
This is in your budget.
He said you do not budget at budget time for this.
So, how do you handle it?
Well, you have to have it somewhere.
What is the plan that that amount of, we talked about?
Well, that's a budget.
It comes out each department.
What are they?
I, we have a liability account that has like a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that was set up after an audit, saying that we needed some money set aside for these kind of things. I'm, I'm not sure that's definitely what it's set up for.
You might talk to Ron, let him explain to you, and say that you do not, you do not budget for this. You can't budget.
Well, you have to have a fund somewhere to manage.
Two hundred thousand dollars, if someone might retire, you don't do that. Call him.
Yeah, I think, I already talked, I have a whole statement here from the...
All Broncos legislative bodies define a, they have a...
I believe that Misty's got a pretty good handle on some of them on here, so I...
We've discussed a lot.
Rather than take up a whole bunch of time discussing it here, just go discuss it. Look, Misty.
Is the mayor done? The mayor's done.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
May we call in favor?
Opposed?